Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of Monday, May 2, 2022. If I can have our city clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Flores.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Thar.
Present.
Councilmember Noble.
Here.
Councilmember Dugo.
Here.
Councilmember Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember Busque.
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I want to remind everyone today, we're having some technical difficulties, so I'm going to ask that everybody please speak directly into the mic and attempt that you're making any comments or anyone wishing to speak when they called people or comments from the public, make sure that you please speak directly into the mic. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right. Do we have a motion made by Councilmember Busque, second by Councilmember Diaz? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that motion carries five, zero. At this time, I'd like to invite any comments from the public, from the public for agenda items only. If you wish to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Once again, on agenda items only. All right. Seeing none, moving on to special business. Today we have two proclamations. The first one is going to be the Guinness Book of World Records. We have Toby Keith, the oldest dog living, 21 years old in Green Acres, and we have, we can read that proclamation into the record.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Green Acres, Florida proclaiming Toby Keith as the Guinness Book of World Records' oldest dog living. Chihuahua Toby Keith has had his record verified at the grand old age of 21 years and 66 days on March 16, 2022. Congratulations, Toby Keith.
So welcome Toby Keith. Beg all round of applause.
Thank you so much. That's fabulous. Thank you for inviting us.
Our pleasure. So we're going to stand over here for a picture. You got Peter? Come on, Peter, act like you're friends with him.
I'm sorry.
Close your eyes, Paula. Real quick.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Shake a paw. Thank you. Are we still taking a shake?
You must take really good care of Toby Keith.
I do. I do. He's definitely pampered. Thank you.
If you guys want to stay down here, we have one more proclamation. All right. So our second proclamation tonight is Mental Health Awareness Month. If I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance into the record.
Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Green Acres, Florida proclaiming May 2022 as Mental Health Awareness Month. The City of Green Acres recognizes the impact in awareness and education, access to services, and acceptance of the importance of mental health and well-being to a person's overall success, and supports the implementation of trauma-informed approaches throughout the system of care. Green Acres announced and congratulates Mental Health Awareness for 2022.
Thank you. So we don't have a representative here tonight, but obviously I want, do we?
She's on her way.
She's on her way. So I still think that this is a, this is something that we need to recognize and make sure that we, we spread the word. Mental health is something that sometimes we take a little lightly. We can't see it. Is this the person coming in here? Yes. Oh, perfect. But I think sometimes it's something that we can't see, and many people struggle with it. In the military, we see it, the form of PTSD, and I've faced it with many soldiers that I've spent time with, and the struggle is real. So anytime that we can raise awareness and are able to talk about it and bring, and bring some awareness and be able to work with our youth is extremely important to me, to the city, I believe to the council, and I'm really stalling. I think she's walking in. Dave Rogers, we just read the proclamation to the record, so I am so happy to be able to.
Apologize off the sixth day.
No worries, no worries. So here's the proclamation. We just read it into the record.
Thank you.
Let's go on to the council.
Thank you all for having me. I appreciate it. As we know, May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and as you know, that's one of the main things that 211 is responding to. We averaged on our first quarter last year, or this year I should say, we had 12,000 calls from individuals reaching out to us for help, and of that, we had 135 average every day from Palm Beach County residents, and that breaks down to 55 people reaching out for mental health requests daily. And the next highest category is housing. Housing, we have 52 people a day reaching out to us for housing here in Palm Beach County. So we know that a lot of our crisis calls are being driven by the housing crisis, so that's just something to keep in mind. But on any given day, you know, we're all dealing with our mental health. Some days we're at this end of the spectrum, some days we're at this end of the spectrum, so it's kind of a fluid thing. But if a person ends up getting into a situation where they don't feel like they're making any progress, they're not moving forward, then it's great for them to reach out to us because we're able to find those mental health resources that can best assist that individual. So we can provide that crisis support, and we can also provide that voice at the other end of the line, and then also help them to kind of navigate to a service provider that can be the best for them. So it's just a very nice way that we want to make an impact in the community, just helping them to reach their full potential. And of course, we're always there to help people find things like food pantries, free clinics. We're getting ready to go into hurricane season, so that's one of our other concerns as well, just helping people prepare for that. And of course, those seniors that are overwhelmed and isolated, so we do have our Sunshine Program for seniors, which really helps their mental health, letting them know that somebody is there advocating for them and just calling them every day to make sure they're okay. We have 560 individuals that we're reaching out to on a daily basis. The other piece we're doing is our elder crisis outreach. So if there's an elder that's over 60, that's overwhelmed and needs help finding services, it could be perhaps bringing food into the home, or maybe they have other needs, or there may be some abuse or exploitation going on, we can help those individuals find the right service provider, and of course, reach out to Adult Protective Services. We have MyFloridaMed that's helping veterans engage with community resources, the VA. But the nice thing about our MyFloridaMed program is that we actually can help the family find resources and services as well, which is usually kind of hard because a lot of the VA programs aren't specific, they're specific to the veteran but not really inclusive of the family. And one of the newest projects that we have, and I'm going to step back, we do have a piece where we're going to start providing a helpline for first responders and law enforcement. Because we know a lot of these individuals are really not only dealing with the crisis they're seeing in the community, but they're struggling with the things that we're experiencing as well. Some people are having their, you know, rents increased and all these other concerns that are going on in their lives, and then they're out there really working with the community and helping those people in the street. So we are going to be a part of a system that will help the first responders, law enforcement, get the mental health care and resources that they need as well. So that's going to be one of our new initiatives. And as always, people can reach out to us just by dialing 211, very simple, or they can text, there's a code to 898-211. So we have various ways that people can reach out to us, particularly young, youthful and young adults and young kids and teens that want to do that form of messaging. We also answer the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. So as we learn about the 988, which will be coming on board in July, our center will be the center that's responding to that locally.
Thank you so much. Is there any comments or questions from the council? Well, from the council and the City of Green Acres, we want to say thank you for what you do for the community, and it's an honor to be able to recognize your efforts.
And I'm just, in the spirit of Get Your Green On, which mental health awareness in the county is promoting that activity, so May 19th, make sure you wear your green and get selfies taken and tag yourself to the GetYourGreenOn.org Facebook. Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Moving on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'd love to approve.
Okay, I have, did I hear a motion on my left? Councilmember Diaz, do you have a second on that motion?
Second.
All right. I have a motion made by Councilmember Diaz, second by Councilmember Busque. I have a comment from Councilmember Noble.
Yes, I'd like to pull item number five on the consent agenda. We have the fire rescue team here. It would be nice to read their proclamation.
Okay, I'll second that.
I hope, I can make an amendment to the.
Yeah, give me one second. I want to defer to my city clerk.
Mayor, we don't technically print them out if they are not being presented at the meeting, so I don't have a printed version to read at this time.
Can we do that at the next meeting since it isn't for another two weeks?
Mayor, the only thing that I would ask, and just please, you know, out of respect for all of our departments as well, is that we do have, you know, City Clerks Week, Purchase Procurement Week, and I am all for recognizing all of our departments, and the departments choose whether or not they want to add them to consent, but understanding we would like to add those to the presentations then going forward for all departments, not necessarily just one over another.
I completely agree.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yep, we're in the comments. Councilmember Dugo.
For just this evening, I'd like to make a suggestion. I'd like to ask our EMS people to stand up and let's give them an acknowledgement.
All right. So Councilmember Noble, is it okay not to pull that agenda item?
Right, it's okay.
All right. So we have a motion made by Councilmember Diaz, second by Councilmember Busque.
I'm sorry, Mayor, just again, if I can, is it going to be on the next meeting for presentation?
Let's, I'll break it up under our comments. Is that okay?
Okay.
Yep.
All right. So do I have all in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? All right. So that consent agenda carries five, zero. All right. Moving on to our regular agenda, public hearing, ordinance 2022-07. If I can have the city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-07, second reading, amending Chapter 16, Article 30, District Regulations, Division 11, Commercial Intensive, Section 16-499, 30, and Article 8, Off-Street Parking and Loading Regulations, Section 16-1336, and Section 16-1538, to add a standalone car wash facility and allow for a use as a special exception in the commercial intensive zoning district, provided for appeal of conflicting ordinances, provided for severability, provided for inclusion in code, and provided for an effective date.
Thank you. And tonight we have Director of Development and Neighborhood Services, Karen Ferris presenting.
Thank you. For the record, Karen Ferris, with the city's Development and Neighborhood Services Department. This is second reading and adoption of ordinance 2022-07 to change the city's commercial intensive code to allow a standalone car wash. This application has not changed since first reading. All the language remains the same. I can go through another detailed presentation, or I can hit the highlights and the requested information from the last meeting that I got questions, information I got questions on at the last meeting, if it pleases the mayor.
Yes, please.
Okay. So technically, right now, you're only allowed to do a standalone car wash if it stands alone, if it stands alone next to a commercial gas station or fuel service station. We're taking away that requirement, and we're allowing them to be standalone on their own site without being adjacent to a gas station. We are increasing the distance requirement between them from 1,500 to 3,000 feet. We're also adding language relative to, or changing some language relative to the use, and adding additional requirements as far as exterior detailing and waxing being prohibited, and trying to mitigate the impacts from some of the visual issues that may come up for a standalone car wash. We also are amending the parking spaces requirements in regards to the types of spaces. We are allowing all of their spaces, even if they have a vacuum in front of them, to count towards their required spaces because it is, it is providing the use of the site, which is part of it would be the vacuuming. We also, they're making changes in regards to the bypass lanes and where the bypass lane goes. They're distinguishing themselves between normally required bypass lane if you have a drive-through for a bank or a fast food. This same requirement will be here, but it'll be at a certain location where you can bypass the people in line. Some of the issues that came up last time were the notifications that go. When a special exception application comes before you, which this will still be a special exception request within the CI zoning district, you have to notify everyone within 300 feet of the outer edges of your property. So in this case, you can see the little sign in the center, and the purple are all of the notifications that will go out as part of that 300-foot notice for this site. The site to the rear of it, if you notice, a lot of times when you are adjacent to a residential, not only do you hit some of the homes, you also hit common space, so notification goes to the POA or the HOA of those sites as well because they are property owners within the development. The other was the request about stacking. We do require them to have area for stacking, and actually, as you'll see when it comes forward in the future, they are double stacking or queuing two lines. A lot of different fast food restaurants are doing this now, where they queue into two lines as opposed to one to get people off the road. And in this case, they're going to be doing, they're actually planning for it as opposed to retroactively fitting it onto their site. It'll be what you'll see before you when they, when they come in the future. And staff does recommend approval of ZTA 2201 through the adoption of ordinance 2207.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for staff? Councilmember Thar, Deputy Mayor Thar?
Less meeting about the potential of the noise from the vacuums to the properties to the south.
Yes. They'll have to meet the same noise requirements as everyone else at the edge of their property line. So while they're not as loud as I think you're thinking, but they will have to meet the decibel requirement. So if there is a complaint, and we go out and there's a decibel reading, if they don't meet it, they'll have to modify it or buffer it somehow.
Do we know, based upon the vacuum that's preplanned, what the decibels, like, I think this already, like, that information's already out there, I guess is my point?
Right.
So do we know how loud they are?
We can make sure that we have that information with the site plan when it comes through.
Okay.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council? All right. This is a public hearing. So I'm opening a public hearing for ordinance 2022-07. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the ordinance, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is not closed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-07 on second reading.
Second.
All right. I have a motion made by Deputy Mayor Thar, second by Councilmember Dugo. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That motion carries five, zero. All right. Moving on to ordinance 2022-09. First reading, if I can have our city clerk, please read the ordinance by title.
Ordinance 2022-09, first reading, amending the code of ordinances at Chapter 5, Fire Prevention and Protection by adding Section 5-11, Public Safety Access to Gated Communities, provided for appeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, inclusion in the code, and an effective date.
All right. And we have, so I'm going to introduce Karen Gardner Young presenting.
Good evening, everyone, and I actually have a combination of planning and fire department today. So Brian is with me as well to present this matter. So this is what we're calling the Click to Enter text amendment, and it was a request from the fire department, and the main purpose is to implement the Click to Enter rapid entry system to allow quicker access to gated communities within the city's limits. So again, when our police are fired, it applies to both. When they need to make a call to a gated community, obviously they have to stop in order for the gates to open. The existing has been what we call knockboxes, which generally are keys are located in, and they have to stop, they have to get the key. This is to go through the radials. So they have a system that they could go right away, they don't have to get out of the car, it's faster. Plus, it would also enable entities that are doing like, like if Palm Beach County needs to do a support call, because they're not generally our fire department, for example, they would be able to use it if they decide to hook up with our system. So the proposed change is to not get rid of knockboxes, to make this in addition to it, because we always want to have a backup plan, right? You never know something could fail. So for new developments, and those are, we're defining as still having certificate of occupancy still outstanding, within six months from the date of adoption of the text amendment, they would have to install this click to enter. For existing developments, they would have to install it within three years from the date of adoption. Now, this is first reading today, so I have to come back for a second reading, so it wouldn't be adopted until second reading. The intention again is to give them time in order to collect any potential cost in order to implement the system. We believe it's estimated cost about $1,000 to about $1,500 in order to implement the system, and I think Nautica Isles has already implemented it, implemented two for the gates. What's happening is as the gates begin to have problems, we're talking with them and asking them to install the system. There is a fine potential if it is not implemented within the three years of the six months, which would be an amount not to exceed, not to exceed $500 per day. We did have a recommending body. This went to Development Review Committee. It was reviewed on April 14th and the 21st, and no objections were received. Since it's not a zoning text amendment, it's not affecting Chapter 12 or 16. It doesn't go to PZAB. This is a Chapter 8 change. So it's a code amendment, not a zoning text amendment. Approval, we're asking for approval of ZTA 2022-06 through adoption of ordinance 2022-09. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, Brian Fuller from the fire department, Karen Gardner Young from the planning department is here to answer any questions or concerns.
I think it's a great idea. Anything that you want to add to?
No, she did a great presentation. Excuse me.
He's all choked up over it.
Question regarding the timeframe for implementation. Three years seems like a long time. No one wants to see fire rescue come to their house, but when you need them, every second counts. I would love to see us reduce that three years down to, I'd say 18 months. Just my thoughts.
Yes, sir. We have seen little resistance to it. The fire marshal and the assistant fire marshal, when they make mention, when they're doing their annual inspections, most of the communities are very well ready to install it. It's pretty fairly reasonable priced, and we were just giving those communities that might have smaller budgets a little bit more time to generate the revenue over a three-year period to be able to install it. But most of the.
If you're comfortable with it, I'd like to see it faster, but if you're comfortable with three years, I certainly won't argue it.
I think that we're going to have most of the communities comply within that time.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Dugo.
Well, that was exactly my thought, too. Not to be harsh, but they do their budgets well ahead of time, and I thought three years was way too generous. I would have gone two years. But hey, that's just my comment.
So I was just whispering in Brian's ear, and I said, maybe what we could do is we could either do an 18-month or two-year with the right to ask for an extension up to the three years. So that way, we might get more compliance a little earlier, but we're not giving up on the three years, so they would have the ability to do that. How does that sound?
Yeah, because if it's in the process, we know they'll get it done if you give them an extension. I like that.
You guys will still have a way to get it with a clicker, right?
Yes, we have clickers. We have the RFID decals on the trucks, also the knockbox system. Problem with the knockbox system is once you open it, the key, when the rescue leaves, they don't usually stop and close the gate, so the gate remains open for a few hours. It becomes problematic. This system, you can program it to remain open for three to five minutes. All the gates reset. The rescue truck can leave in a normal fashion and not have to stop.
I just remember the difference between 36 months to 24.
Yes, sir. Yes, that system will always be there, yeah.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a question, just because I know we're coming up on budget here, and I know we have our beautification grants, which HOAs could qualify for. Perhaps, and I'm just putting this out there, perhaps as we look at budget time, we can see what was used, what wasn't used, and if that might be an option for certain HOAs. Some may be having difficulties, especially with what's happening now, you know, with the cost of living adjusting. So I'm just putting it out there to the council. Perhaps we could be a little open-minded and look at that as maybe a, it's a short period of time, 18 months, two years, where if perhaps we reallocate some of those dollars specifically for, that HOAs could do a matching to help defray some costs. Just a thought.
Any other comments or questions?
That.
Councilmember Dugo.
That's very generous thought. I would just wonder how much money we would have in a program to, I mean, we have hundreds of HOAs, so if we have a program like that, they're all going to apply. So how do we?
As I said, something to look at during budget time and.
All right. Anything going back to what we're talking about here? Any other comments or questions? All right. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2022-09.
All right. Motion made by Councilmember Dugo, second by Councilmember Busque. All in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries five, zero. I want to remind everyone to please speak into the mic directly into the mic. Our staff is having a hard time being able to do the minutes, so please speak directly into the mic. All right. Moving on to a third regular agenda item, Class 3 Site Plan Amendment, SP-08-01C. If I can have our city clerk, please read it into the record.
Class 3 Site Plan Amendment, SP-08-01C, to modify the approved roof interior for the approved House of Worship with associated childcare center located at the southwest corner of South Chagrow and Chicasaw Road.
And once again, we have Karen first presenting.
Good evening. Before you tonight is a consideration of approval. It's your request to change elevation detail on a site plan that was approved previously by the City Council. Just to give you a little bit of the project history, this is the site that was approved by City Council for a House of Worship on August 17, 2009, as SP-0801. It was a multi-phase project, but they have decided to build it all in one phase for 17,314 square feet of a church and a childcare center. The site development approval was set to expire on January 1, 2016. This was after they did get our two one-year time extensions to their development owner approval, and they also received some state-approved extensions at that time to get their approval from August 17, 2009, to January 1, 2016. They did receive a foundation permit that was issued right before it expired, on December 31, 2015, through the building department, and a utility permit was issued later, on June 17, 2016, after the applicant had received outside agency approvals from South Florida Water Management, Lake Worth District. District, for your, you know, your outside agency permits. The question comes up, when we bring this application before you, is how they, how do they extend the project for such a long time? They did start construction in two thousand and fifteen or early two thousand and sixteen. You are only required to have, you can have a hundred and eighty days between inspections that keeps your permit open. So they have done that, there was one point where their permit had to be reinstituted, which it was done by the previous building official, but since that time, they have been getting inspections. Their most recent inspections is a mechanical rough that passed on February twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one, and then a drywall inspection that was done on four eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. So any type of inspection that is done on the site starts the counter again for a hundred and eighty, eighty days, and that's been a level of frustration, but this is what is given to all construction projects by the Florida Building Code. Tonight, they're requesting to change the roofing materials on the approved elevations for the site. The development order required a standing seam metal roof, it was Surrey beige, and the stucco walls were Bavarian cream. I just put a couple of the elevations and the color of the roof as it was supposed to be a standing metal, and then the, what the color is supposed to be of the building. The applicant did put on a three-tab shingle roof on the site. They did this originally to maintain the improvements that they'd already done, the sheeting, the tar paper, they wanted to cover it because they did not have the money to put the metal roof in. They discussed this with the building official at the time, who allowed them to put on the three-tab shingle roof. He did get assurances that the metal seam roof could be put over top of this once it was put on, and it seemed like a good decision to make, because we'd already had situations where they had to remove and replace and remove and replace equipment, because there was nothing that was protecting it from the elements. So by putting on the tab or the shingles, the roof is now protected from the elements, and we don't have to, we can move, they can move forward with their interior work. And this is the existing building as it stands today with the shingle roof, the red shingle roof. The request, just to give you some history, on October twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, the applicant did request this to change the roofing materials for the project administratively. Staff cannot consider, do what is considered a downgrade in materials administratively, so we took the request to city council, and city council did deny it on December third, two thousand and eighteen. On March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, the applicant resubmitted the same request to amend the roofing materials for the project. The application went to DRC on April fourteenth and April twenty-first, and staff does recommend denial, because we can't approve what we consider a downgrade in the materials to go from a metal seam roof to shingle. So they're before you tonight to request the change in the materials.
Thank you, all right. I guess I'd like to start this conversation. I know this, we talked about this back in two thousand and eighteen, and what has, with the roof, when at that point in time, we brought it up that, we brought it up that we, the shingles were not a permanent approval, that it was just to protect the roofing that they had already invested in, but that we wanted to see the metal roof go up. Between, when they started this project to now, how many different projects have gone up since? Because I believe there's a medical office that just occurred in between, there is the Aldi's, so there's been some development in that area, and they've all met the standards that were required. Am I correct about that?
Yes.
Okay. So if, if, you know, I'm having a hard time understanding why they agreed to do something, and now they're trying to backtrack. So that's where I'm getting a little bit lost. I see your hands, I'll get to you, I promise. I see your hands, I promise I'll get to you. So that's where I'm getting a little lost. Do you know about how many projects have been gone in? I mean, I just counted two off the top of my head, but roughly, like what?
I mean, that would be in, the project started in two thousand and sixteen, so I could probably give you a list of ten projects, but when they're, when they came through, they are, we would disagree, they are moving slowly, and they are going from, you know, they're doing changes, or they're doing the construction that they can do in a time period, I believe with the construction loans that they have, they get draws on that, they do what they can. The applicant is here tonight, and they could probably answer any questions, but it's not, as far as a standard, it was something that, this is what they proposed when they came through the process. So the standard is not that they have to have a metal seam roof, but that's what they proposed and what we approved. So the, you know, projects come through all the time, and many of them would like to reduce maybe what their original approval, once they get through the process, but as staff, we kind of have to hold the line of what they submitted and what they got approved by council.
Thank you. All right, I got councilmember Noble and councilwoman Dugo.
I remember a conversation on this church not too long ago, and I raised, I raised a question, is that roof that they put on durable, and is that as good as any roof that you could find? And if so, I think we agreed that maybe we should tell the church that they didn't have to put the metal roof on. So I'm still thinking that maybe there's some hope for these people, that if we agree, the council and your department agrees that that roof is adequate, functional roof, that they do not have to put the metal roof on, and that will save them costs and a lot of frustration. Can we do something like that?
Well, it's, it's within your ability to, that's why it's before you tonight. If a majority of council would like to allow them to use, to maintain the red shingle roof, they can. It has been inspected, it has been placed on the way it was supposed to, that was, that was the consideration between the previous building official and the applicant. They, they wanted to install this roof because that's what they could get at the time, and they needed to protect, you know, the parts of the roof they'd already done, because they'd had to redo things at least two or three times already.
In your professional opinion, and what you're saying, is that roof is adequate the way it is?
Well, I'm not a building official.
Can we get it approved or inspected to find out what it is?
Of course. The building official would have to sign off on it. That would be part of the, that's part of the review process when they go out there and do their inspections. He did, he did, he did approve them to put it on, they did discuss the ability for him to put the metal seam over top of it, that it would work, so he did not allow them to put it on as a final requirement, but we can verify with the building official that he would accept it, if you want to.
I generally would like to ask the applicant, if they've given some thought to leaving the roof the way it is, and would that be satisfactory for them, and would that be a lot more economical for them? Can I ask someone there?
You can, that's why, they actually put in this application to request it.
Councilmember Noble.
They would like to keep the metal tab shingle roof. I'm sorry, not metal, the red tab shingle roof. It's their application before you tonight, this is in staff bringing before you, it's the church.
Their application is asking for the removal of the metal roof.
They don't want to have to put on the metal roof, they would like to maintain what is up now, the red shingle three-tab.
So we could approve that tonight?
That's why it's before you, because it needs your approval for them to make that change.
Fine, they will have my approval.
All right, councilmember Dugo.
So the church has been a shell for several years, and I understand what the mayor's saying, yes, Aldi's has been built in another place, but those are corporations, these are not for profit, these are churches, and I'm sure that they have to do a lot of fundraisers to finish the church, and I would ask the pastor that, but if the roof is sound, that's there, and it helps them finish this project, so people can go to church and have a childcare, and the roof passes code, I have no problem approving this.
Does anybody have a thought?
Do we have an estimated completion date? I think, I think that's the, I think everybody wants to see this project done, it's been in this stage for many years. Do we know an approximate completion date?
Hello, good evening, my name is Alva Donaldson, and I'm the pastor of the church, and I'm the president of the corporation, and-
Pastor Milton McNeil, the vice president and also pastor.
This evening, I want to thank you all for accommodating us on platform, and yes, it's been a long haul for us, it's been very tiresome. Would also thank you for allowing us this extension for these number of years, considering this project should have been completed a long time ago, but because of finances, that, you know, we have had great challenges, many issues. Tonight, I just called a contractor who was told of this needing, he said he had forgotten about it. The last meeting we had pertained to the same case, he had forgotten about it, and we have had contractual problems over this period of time, and this roof issue is also due to the contractor, and we've lost a lot of money during the process of this. The duration of time, we're proposing by the end of this year, councilmembers, that we're going to complete this building, because we're doing fundraisers, we're trying to get loans through bank, we've got a loan right now through a bank, and we cannot get the final draw, similar cause, we have not yet met the requirement to apply for another draw from the bank, because we have to do a certain amount of work. The site is there, the great material that they used, inferior to the right stuff that they're supposed to use, and the contractor, you know, saw that and just left it as it is. So now he's not here tonight to answer some of the questions, so we are the representative of the church, trying to stand at your mercies. If we could leave that roof on, it's durable, it was approved, and I think that roof will last for a long time, then the funds that we make now, instead of putting it in the roof, we can go ahead and just continue the structural completion of this building. And as I, you know, we propose to have this complete by the end of this year, it's been a long draw, and, you know, by the grace of God, I'm quite sure that we're going to accomplish it. And we've got a few members who came just to support this cause, and we're doing a number of effort to see to that this is completed, so we're standing here at your mercies.
Couple more questions.
I think, did you say you, you could be complete by the end of the year? That was the?
Yes.
I believe at one point you had mentioned American Rescue Plan funds, and that the applicant had received some, so I think my, my struggle with this, as much as I want to see this project done, I don't like doing changes after the fact, because what's to stop the next person, the next entity, from saying, hey, I want to do this, and then go, well, sorry, I spoke, I don't want to do this. So that's my struggle with setting a bad precedent, I don't know the legalese behind it, but that's, that's where I struggle with this. That's all that I have.
Mayor.
Councilmember Noble.
So I have a big problem with this as well. How about, I don't know if we can do this, you go forward, finish everything else with the project, and then go back and do the roof. I can't forgive the roof totally, but I can, I do see it in a plan of finishing everything, landscaping the building, things you need to do, and then going back and put a timeframe of several years on it, but I want to see that metal roof on that building. That's all.
Councilmember Dugo.
My comment is, and to Mr. Tharvin, council, to Deputy Mayor Tharvin, councilwoman Busque is, prior to the R-word that nobody's mentioning, we have nine percent inflation. I cannot imagine what the price of the metal roof is now versus two years ago. So for that, I'm probably more lenient in accepting this.
Councilmember Diaz, and then councilwoman Noble.
To staff, just to clarify, if I understood correctly, if this project was put forward for review, plan reviews and permitting now, with the shingle roof, would that be approved?
If that's what they had shown in their original site plan approval, yes.
It would be approved with a shingle roof?
They would be able to propose a shingle roof, and if they had proposed it to you originally, and that's what got approved, they could have gotten a permit. Our problem is it wasn't what they provided to you as their elevations when they came through the process.
Okay, councilmember was good. I mean, I'm sorry, councilmember Noble, then councilwoman was good, then you.
I think any thoughts that we would be setting a precedence should be removed, because this is the body that makes decisions. We adjust, we give special exceptions as needed, and so I don't think we should worry about making a change here. This change is for the good of this, this community, for the citizens who want to stop their church. Why burden them unnecessarily to put on a metal roof as councilperson? Dugo, as mentioned, must be much more expensive than it was originally in the plans, so I think we are the governing body, and we can make the decisions and changes as needed.
That's all, Busque.
This project has gone on for years. Had the roof been purchased in a timely manner, inflation would not be an issue, and I think that, that needs to be put aside. I am for opening it, I am for finishing it to code, and I, and I think they should be required to put the metal roof on two years, three years from now, but I don't want to be in that exception, and I do think it sets a precedent, and so I am against a blanket exception.
Councilwoman Dugo.
So as I understand this, the pastor has cut a construction loan, he cannot do another draw to complete the church, because we haven't done a site plan amendment to this?
No, no, no. They have, they have to meet certain milestones before they can draw, and they have things they have to get done based on what they-
Or they get the next draw.
Before they can get the next draw, it has nothing to do with what we've approved for them. I don't think so.
We've done, but we have done site plan amendments in the past.
Yeah, we've done some, we've done one-
Because I've sat here and done them before.
Right, we've done them for this site.
Yes, okay.
So I want to interject again, I have some questions for you, for your organization, but my concern is, and councilwoman Noble's correct, we are the body that can change things, absolutely, but when you, when you approve something and then things get changed, what is it to stop the next person, and then the next organization, and the next organization, and it's just going to set a bad pattern, and it is creating room for people to challenge, because we approve something, then they come back and they change, for whether it's economic reasons or whatever reason it may be. So it just, it does open the door for people to challenge our decision, because now we're, we approve- Because now we're, we approve something, they come back, we change. My question to your organization is, you mentioned that you can have this, the church completed by the end of the year. We've heard similar stories before about the church being done. What is it that's, between now and the end of the year, what is it that you got to get done to have the church up and running?
We have to complete the inside, installations, and also the site work has to be done. Lift station also has to be built. And if we get certain amount of work accomplished, then we can get some money from the bank. And we'll be able to push the work forward. One of the problems, as Ms. Paul mentioned, if we had done that during the past, then we would not be here today. The roof would have been completed. But because inflation has been tearing this thing up, we had contractual problems, money were emerging different size by the contractors. So we had raw D's along the way. If everything had channeled away after we got the first and second draw, everything would have been done correctly, precisely, would be over. But because of the unfortunate stages that we acquired during the previous time, then this is exactly where it took place. So if we can get the site work done and get the inside, your condition is established already, and the air handles are set up, the mechanical inspector went past that, and a number of things been going on. But we cannot get a good amount, a hundred and some thousand dollars from them until more is done. So if we can get that, we will more...
So just to clarify, the roof is not preventing you from getting the work inside done, is that correct?
Absolutely not, it's not.
So you can continue to move in that direction. Do you have the full funding to finish the project?
From the bank, if we get everything done. This is one of the reasons why we're doing fundraisers. We're doing, we're trying to acquire a loan right now with another bank institution. And we've got the membership, we're also making pledges, getting their own loans from their banks and stuff like that. So this is what we're doing. But because of the urgency of this, we have to finish this in December. One of the primary reasons is that contractor said next month, June, is walking away. Now, with that in mind, we have to make sure that maybe we hire another contractor. To retain another contractor is going to be economically challenging also. So we have to definitely do much between now and next month to get a number of things done with the building is concerned. And we believe, I think, that it's going to be done.
So if I understand correctly, the funding is not fully there. You're still working on fundraising.
That's correct.
And you're saying that the contractor is walking away in June?
Yes.
That's very concerning. My last question is to staff. Councilmember Busque just mentioned about can we leave the approval of the roof for a later time, pending on the completion of the project? Is that something that we can...
Of course.
We can do here?
You can condition that they come back when they're at the, you know, ready to get a CO and request the change then. That's in your ability to do?
I think, I like the idea of waiting and making that determination once the church is completed.
Can I make a motion?
I want to let the gentleman finish.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Pastor, I apologize.
That's all right. If that's the case, Mr. Mayor, if we complete, when we complete this year, like I said, and the CO is granted, could there be some extended time for us to change roof? Instead of having done right there and then, another five or so years? Because that's going to be really hard for us to do that within the same marginal time that we had after the building is completed.
If I read between the lines, I think the council is willing to work with you. I think they just want to see the church get to a point where we're at a ribbon-cutting type of event. So that you guys can get on your way, and we will figure out what we'll do with the roof at a different point in time. If I'm reading, if I'm reading the council correctly, I have, I want to defer to Councilmember Busque first, and then I'll go to the two gentlemen tomorrow.
Okay, yes, I think that we should revisit the roof after it's completed at the end of the year. And then give them an extension of a certain amount of time to put the roof on or grant them permission for the roof that exists. We can make that decision at that time. But I want to see this church completed and services on Sunday.
Councilmember Noble.
No, you do not have my approval, so you know. I'm not in favor of what you suggested. Because I think it's brutal to keep waiting for a roof that's not necessary. The roof is not necessary. They have a roof that functions properly, it's not necessary. Why do you want to impose this group on an additional cost and liability to complete something that is absolutely not necessary? I think we can make decisions as necessary. And if an approval of not having the metal roof put on, I think it's a decision that we can easily make and not worry about any future repercussions.
Deputy Mayor Tharp. Applicant made a statement about a lift station needing to be built. Did I hear that correct? Or maybe I misheard? He's saying, yes, lift station?
Well, that's part of the old planning system, to get the water out and sewage out of the property itself.
They have site work that they have to do as well.
Okay.
If you can see from the picture on the, you know, they have, they still have to put in their parking lot, they still have to put in, you know, their landscaping. The site work still has to be done for the project.
That's the canal on Chicasol Road that's being paved, covered?
Eventually.
Piped something? So does that impact this project? Because obviously, it's adjacent to it.
There's an easement already for work on their property.
Would it be easier for them to do the work now or after that it's piped? I guess is the question. Because that seems to be...
They can do the work now. There is an easement on the property for Lake Worth Drainage District. So there, it was worked into the plan. Because there are things that you can't do or put into easements for the drainage. I should have brought the actual full plan so you could see the site plan. But they'll, most of the parking is on the other side of the site for this project.
Okay. And I'm willing, I want to work. I want to see the project done. But I think I would agree with Councilmember Busque that let's get it moving forward. Let's address it. The roof's not holding anything up. So I don't think we need to make a decision tonight because it doesn't change anything, if I'm understanding correctly. I just want to see the project move forward. I think that's my final statement.
So can I make a motion? I have...
Councilmember Busque and then Councilmember Dugo.
Well, if Councilwoman Dugo needs to speak...
I just have one comment.
Councilmember Dugo.
Go ahead. No, my comment is, this is our city. This is a building that needs to be finished. Just for the integrity of going down Jog Road, it needs to be finished, among other reasons. I think that we're all kind of stalling ourselves on this. If this church is finished by December, well, we're going to reconsider. Shall we keep the red roof or impose a few more years of a financial burden?
My suggestion wasn't to make the decision if we're going to keep the roof. The decision would be to extend the period of time. I don't care if it's three years, five years for them to raise the money for it. If the council wants to say, keep the roof, then that's also an option. I just want to see this done. We've been promised the end of the year, next year. I mean, and I understand that they have financial problems. But when you take on a project of this dimension, you, you know, should have your ducks in a row. And all I'm trying to do is get this thing done. So I'd like to make a motion to accept that the project will be done by the end of the year, and we can revisit if we want to give them time for the roof, if we want to let them keep the roof that exists. I just want to give them incentive to finish this project. It's going on for how many years? Six years?
Twelve.
It's time.
All right, so I'm going to ask refer to our attorney to help me formulate this motion. So are we saying that we're going to defer or table this site plan amendment until we get CO?
The CO, yes.
So they cannot get a CO without the metal roof, as it stands?
As it stands, right.
So they would have to come back to you before they request their CO. So they had to do it in a time period when they know they're going to get their CO within 30 days.
So in order to submit for the CO, then they come before us. Is that what the motion?
I intend the motion is to postpone consideration of this request for the roof until after everything else is completed. Landscaping, interior, all other items are completed. Is that the intent?
Yes.
I believe so.
That's why I intend the motion to postpone this until all other items are completed other than the roof, and then bring the roof issue back for your consideration.
All right, so I have a motion made by Councilmember Busque.
Second.
Second by Deputy Mayor Tharp. And comments or questions from the council? Councilmember Noble and Councilmember Dugo.
You're only kicking the can down the road. I don't understand why we need that motion. I will not vote in favor of it.
All right, Councilwoman Dugo.
I do, I think it's, I maybe cannot say it as well as Mr. Noble just did. But I do feel like you're just stalling and putting it aside. I respect the motion, but I can't.
Okay, so I have a motion once again by Councilmember Busque and by Deputy Mayor Tharp. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I apologize. I didn't see Councilmember Diaz hand up. Councilmember Diaz.
I'm struggling with this, first and foremost, because obviously, our staff has not recommended approving this. Secondly, because the additional funding is not contingent on the roof. So I agree with my colleagues that it's not a pressing decision that needs to be made now. And I think allowing them the time to complete the other items that you're saying are you're able to complete by the end of the year, I think it'll show good faith, for lack of a better term. If you can come back to us and show here, you know, we were able to complete this in the time that you've requested, will you please then reconsider? And, you know, and a lot can happen. I mean, we know a lot can happen in six months. We've seen that through the last, the world can change in a minute. So I just wanted to just say that, and I will be supporting the motion.
All right, so I have a motion made by Deputy Mayor Tharp, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Opposed.
All right, so that motion carries 3-2. Let the record show that Dugo and Councilmember, Councilmember Dugo and Councilmember Noble descended. All right, moving on to discussion items. We have smoking, vaping in the parks. Deputy Mayor Tharp.
So as was brought up at the last meeting, House Bill 105 authorizes cities and counties to restrict smoking within the boundaries of any kind of beach or park that they own. In addition, we can restrict within our boundaries any county-owned park that's located within our boundaries. There's a couple strange phrases in that House bill that I'd like staff to, you know, to review and come back to us on. It says, you know, we can impose something as long as it does not conflict with any county ordinance. And unfortunately, I don't know what county ordinance is. So I'd like to, you know, request that we look at it with the idea that we should ban smoking within our parks, with the exception of cigars, apparently.
Quick question. This was brought up last time. Are they saying that vaping is allowed?
No.
Smoking and vaping.
The only thing that is allowed is unfiltered cigars.
Cigars, that's right, okay. So you're asking for us to...
To authorize staff to come up with...
Work on this?
To work on this and make sure that we don't conflict with any county ordinance for the parks that we, I don't know, we lease from them. We have one park that we, is theirs, but it's ours type of scenario.
This is a discussion item. Are there any other council members that want to provide input?
I just wanted to ask Mr. Tharp. So with that county ordinance, can we, I mean, like, there are certain public places that have a smoke-free campus. So I would like to look into that also.
Well, I think House Bill 105, it said specifically, any public beach or park that we own. So I don't know if we can extend it beyond that. I mean, I would love to be smoke-free, but...
I mean, I know a lot of places that have done that.
So, I mean, if we could start with our parks, I think that's a great first step. I think it shows a great, you know, step forward to, so, you know, the youth aren't seeing people smoking because then they think it's part of life, and we got to break the cycle, so. And I think if we do one small thing that can help us.
Is Cara here? I mean, Cara, just referring to you for a quick second. I believe federal buildings, you can't smoke around them within like 50 feet or something. Am I correct about that?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I know we have a policy in our city, but I don't know about federal.
Like hospitals.
Well, I think the discussion item is to allow staff to look into this further. So is there any, oh, I see, Attorney Tercivia.
I don't believe we're going to conflict with any county ordinance. The only question I'll look into is going about the park that we have that arrangement with the county. I think the county is not going to have any problems with this type of policy. My instinct is they're going down the same path, to make the same restrictions on county parks.
And did I understand from Councilwoman Dugo that you would like to extend it to city buildings as well?
Yeah, I would like that.
We do have, we do have in our personnel or in our handbook, we do have policy in place regarding the amount of space and perimeter that you can be within the city buildings and be smoking.
Okay, so right now?
Yeah, you can't smoke anywhere out front here in front of the building. I think you have to be closer to the road.
It doesn't say anything about it being like a smoke-free campus. And outside by the park benches, the receptacles have top ashtrays. And only reason I'm saying is, yes, I came in the other day and there were a couple people sitting there having a nice puff or two, so.
Well, our policy is related to employees. It's not necessarily for the public, so we can look at both.
Yeah. And I think vaping, I don't know what the language reads, but vaping seems to be a newer thing. So we can also include that. So are we all in consensus to have staff work on this?
Yep.
Anybody object to it?
No.
Okay, so.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you, Council, Deputy Mayor Tharp. All right, moving on to comments from the public on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Emily Jacobs, Robarts Mostert. If you know me, and this is, was an agenda item, and I wanted to speak while the church people were still here. I live across the street from the church in that development. Every time we go up to Jog Road, we see the church. It's been, count them, 13 years. My husband was on the planning commission. He has since passed away. He was one of the original people that approved the church. 13 years. My neighbors have asked me to speak today, not concerned with the roof. I understand the roof is a matter of principle for you and a matter of procedure. We want the landscaping... We want the landscaping done, so that it's not an eyesore. I don't care if they have wallboard up. I don't care if they have floors down. I want it to look like our city has its act together. And that's very important to my neighbors and to other people that drive down Jaw Road. I think that someone has to say to these church people, "Outside, get this done." Now, I know there was an issue that some of the material they were using for fill was contaminated. You know, I've been following this for 13 years. Can someone say to this church group, please, I wish I had been able to say it to them, "Do the landscaping." You can get church members to come in with hoes and mulch and do the landscaping. This is not a big deal. And this was a request from my neighbors, so just saying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing no one, moving on to the city manager's report.
Wait, one more.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Lisa Constantine. I reside in 3180 Santa Catalina Place, Green Acres, Florida, 33467. So this item was placed in the agenda and it was pulled last minute. It's for ordinance number 2021-22, and it's for the petition to rezone certain areas of Green Acres. It's for ZTA 2105 MXD-O or zero. So I'm just here, so we reside in the Santa Catalina community, and we received a notice from the City of Green Acres for a second public hearing. We were not notified of the first one, and we were not notified of the changes that were being proposed by the city, by the developer. So we just wanted to let you all know that most of, the majority of the residents of Santa Catalina are objecting to the changes that are being proposed by the developer, mainly that he wants to change the zoning from professional zoning, from professional buildings, to just any mixed development whatsoever. We believe that that will highly affect the community, and it will highly change how, the proximity of where he's trying to, the developer is trying to change those buildings will be way too close to the community. There's no separation between that space and where the houses are located. So we would like our community to be heard next time, and hopefully we can speak further about this issue going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
They're not putting up the three-minute time.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we are now moving on to the city manager's report.
Good evening. The only thing that I wanted to be able to go over is just the meeting schedule for the next couple of months, understanding that we are going into budget season. And just based on the way some of the holidays fall, we do not have meetings, so I just wanted to make the council aware in case any adjustments or changes wanted to be considered or discussed. We do have a meeting on May the 16th, so that will be the second meeting of this month. Then we have our next meeting. We have meetings the first and the third Monday of each month. The next meeting is June the 6th. There would be no meeting on June the 20th. And then the next meeting after that would not be until July 18th, because July 4th is a holiday, so there would be no meeting on July 4th as well. So just so that the council understands, we will be presenting the capital improvement projects at the June meeting, but as, or no, I'm sorry. I think, yes, I think that that's the June meeting, the June meeting that they'll be presented at. But that is June the 6th. There would then be no meeting until July the 18th. And I didn't know if the council wanted to look at that or, you know, if there was any need to make any adjustments there.
You said there was no meeting June 20th?
Yes, that's correct. The city is closed due to Juneteenth.
Got it. Councilmember Dugo.
I will be out of town June 6th. I don't return. My flight doesn't get in until the 7th. Is there any possibility, because it's capital project discussion? I, is it, since we don't have the 20th, could we do the 13th? Or am I, I don't, I don't mean to impose, but... I probably do so.
Is that, is?
Yeah, is there a possibility?
There's a question. How does, so add a second meeting?
Or, or in place of the 6th.
In place of the 6th, do the 13th?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're saying June 13th?
Yeah, and yes, instead of doing the 6th, the following Monday is the 13th. Is that possible?
Um, yeah, sure. I mean, that would be, you know, the council can provide that direction, whether or not they'd like to have that meeting, the June meeting on the 13th, and then the July meeting would be July 18th, that Monday. And the next meeting would be July 18th, so June 13th and July 18th?
July 18th. Oh, gosh.
So I don't know how I feel about moving council meetings. Because then this is gonna become a, check your schedule. I mean, we advertise that our meetings are on the first and the third. So I don't know. I mean, I don't mind changing. I think I would rather add another meeting. But I know staff puts in a lot of work into this stuff, so I don't know. I guess...
And Mayor, if I can, just to reiterate again, the 6th, we have a regular council meeting on the 6th of June. The 20th is the holiday. July 4th is a holiday. July 18th, we would then have that second meeting in July. So there would be one, two, three, four, five weeks from the June 6th meeting to the July 18th meeting. We're okay from our schedule perspective and what we have coming down the pike. I just wanted to make sure and bring that up to see if there was any concerns from the council. Just understanding that that is summer as well. If there's any concerns or issues, that that's what we're looking at right now.
Correct, but Councilmember Dugo would like to change the 6th to the 13th, and that's what I'm struggling with. I don't know.
Well, I can zoom in. I'll be on.
Okay, are we still able to do Zoom if we, if we have a board, a forum here?
Um, we could probably do, we can, we can figure something out. We can do something with conferencing or something, a call, or we can figure that, something out there.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine. I don't want to impose a change if someone does it, so.
All right, anything else, city manager?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorneys report, please.
No report.
Thank you. The mayor and city councils report. So before I defer to the council members, earlier we talked about department proclamations. So let's kind of start the conversation there. We wanted to pull one specific item, which was EMS week, but I agree with the city manager where if we're gonna pull one, we have to pull, we have to recognize our staff equally. And I love recognizing people. I love doing proclamations. I think that's the right time to do it. Our special business has no, absolutely no problem recognizing our staff during their week. So with that being said, are we all in agreement that we, that departments can have their proclamations be read into and have them join us at the beginning of the council meeting?
Yes.
Agree. I do not agree.
Councilmember Noble, you were the one that asked for this. You asked to pull a?
No, no, I asked for it to be read in, and there was a reason. We didn't read it in, but she didn't have it, okay? Don't make a big deal out of it, okay? It's passed, okay? Now you're, now you're changing it to have what turned out to be one hour-long presentation at the last meeting. And what I'd like to see is spend more time on the business meeting material of the meeting. I counter to what you're saying. I think we could suggest, I would suggest, we have only two proclamations read, maximum two proclamations, and they have to be done within 15 minutes each. So therefore, we could spend more time on the important business of the city.
I'm having a hard time remembering what presentation was an hour.
What presentation? One, we had a presentation. It was one hour-long presentation.
It was, it was regular agenda item. It was an ordinance.
No, no, no.
All right, so I believe we have consensus from the council to have department proclamations be read. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yes.
All right, so anybody opposed to having department proclamations?
All read, four or five of them at one time at a meeting.
They have different months. They go by months. They have EMS week, they have?
Oh, it works week.
Oh, it works week, so they all have it at different times.
This is read without having to get up and take a photo?
If they want to have their photo taken, I will oblige.
And you will oblige, make sure you get your picture in the front of the newspaper?
Oh, come on!
Stop it.
All right, let me just get consensus starting from my left. Councilmember Buscay.
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz.
Can I add something to that?
Yes.
That's not the time. I don't think we should limit the amount of proclamations that we have. I mean, we can't pick and choose one person, one group, one department over another.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we've limited them. Just during COVID, for a certain period, that was limited.
Correct.
Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Dugo. Councilmember Noble and Deputy Mayor Tharp.
Yes, and I think we all need to remember, we're here to serve. That's why we're up here. And if it, we have a maximum of two meetings per month is what we're legally required to do. I don't think it's too much to ask if we have 20 proclamations in one evening to honor the people who deserve to be honored.
Thank you. All right, now we're moving.
Mayor, I'm sorry. It's Quinn. May I have permission, please? I just want to confirm, do you, does everyone want all of the, the entire proclamation read in its entirety or title? Because I know that was the conversation at 1.2. I just want to make sure that I clarify.
I think we've always read the entire proclamation. Am I, I'm looking at you, City Mayor McQ.
We had, we have read the entire proclamation. In a lot of instances, it's usually the title and then just the closing portion of the proclamation, recognizing whatever is being recognized, and then the closing portion, so I think it just depends. But as of late, we've been doing just the title and then the closing piece of the proclamation. Not necessarily, because some, you could have 10, 15 lines, some you could have four whereas's. It's just all dependent.
Right. Is it too much to defer to the person that's receiving the proclamation?
To have them do it?
No, to have them choose what is?
No, no. I can ask if I can get ahold of them before the meeting.
Yeah, and if not, then we go by title.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that work? All right, city councils report. I'm gonna start to my left. Councilmember Buscay.
Yeah? Okay, I just want to reiterate what Mr. Thorpe said. We're here to do the people's business. If we have to stay till 10 o'clock, I would hope not. The people deserve that, and I have no issues with having a little longer meeting if it's necessary. The other thing is, I was really pleased to see that the public hearing for Catalina, the Catalina Estates, was pulled for the agenda, and I really hope that we can work something out with the landlord and the homeowners. So I just want to point that out. Thank you, Mrs. McQ, for taking care of that.
City, Councilmember Diaz.
Yes, I have two things. First, I would like to thank and give strong kudos to Michelle Thompson and her team, who organized and vetted, pre-vetted and organized interviews for 19 scholarship applicants this year. And so thank you very much for all your hard work. It was, it was refreshing and wow, it really makes you take another look at your own CV and question it, because these students were all remarkable. The other thing actually is, has to do with a proclamation. I did receive a phone call and an email from Ms. Winnie Dunmire, who is asking that the city please consider issuing the proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And I'm bringing it here because I do know in, last year, there was some questions about issuing it or not. So I, as a courtesy, I wanted to bring it forward to my fellow council members and see if they would be willing to issue that proclamation. The day, National Gun Violence Awareness Day, is June 3rd. It's also known as Wear Orange Day. It is observed on the first Friday in June since 2015, and it honors Hadiya Pendleton, who was shot and killed at the age of 15 in Chicago. This year would be her 25th birthday.
I think historically, we have had that proclamation. I think last year was a one-off that, it was pulled. Am I correct about that, City Mayor McQ?
Correct. It was, it was issued prior, last year it was not, but prior to that it was.
So I think it would, I think it would be ideal to have that group of parents come back and be part of that proclamation. But this is a council, so I'll start to my left.
I'm agreeing with that.
Yes, Councilmember Diaz, yes. Councilmember Dugo.
You want to do a proclamation?
She was requesting a proclamation.
Okay.
Is that a yes? Councilmember Noble?
I have to speak on the issue, if I may.
Sure.
The reason why it was pulled is that, you know, we try to be very fair in this city and deal with the problems of the city. What we don't need to do is get involved in national issues. And violence and gun is close to being a national issue. We all hate violence, of course, and I'm certainly against violence. But when we get into the point where we start bringing issues that are almost national issues, where we start breaking us apart by our political parties, is not viable. In addition to that, we had about 10 people come up and literally accused me, because I voted against it, accused me of killing their children. They got up there and said that, and looked me in the face and accused me of killing their children, because I didn't want to vote in favor of that. So I, I don't want to have, I would prefer not to have that proclamation again.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Tharp.
As gun violence is the number-one killer of children under 18, I could not support this proclamation anymore. So thank you, Councilmember Diaz, for bringing it forward.
All right, we got consensus to bring it forward. Anything else, Councilmember Diaz? Councilmember Dugo.
Uh, I'm sorry. I had a couple things I wanted to mention. First of all, to Ms. Thompson, you had 19 applicants that you pulled for on the sky. We had, we had 20. You get 20. And so I just wanted to make this comment, because I'm on the League of Cities Scholarship Committee. For some reason, this year, we usually get 10, 15, and we only ended up with about five applicants. So maybe there's a way that we can get that out to our people. Green Acres only has five or six, so, you know, maybe they can also apply to the league. That would be wonderful, give more opportunities. Also, May is Remember the Military Month, so I'd just like to say that. Thank you.
Councilmember Noble.
Well, just as a reminder about our city, Green Acres happens to be one of the best cities in the county. Just to remind you, we have the lowest tax rate in the county for the size of our city. All our equipment in the city, fire trucks and everything, are all paid for, 100% fully paid for. We have a very well-organized city. When you propose candidates to run for office here, please look at the quality of the person. please look at the quality of the person and decide whether that individual who's running really will qualify to do this city some justice or will destroy the city and bring it to a level of, if you watch what's happening?
Point of order.
The city of Lake, Lake Worth.
Council, Councilwoman Wuske, he has the right to speak, let him speak.
I've said what I want to say.
Deputy Mayor Tharman.
I, I can't, I have nothing this evening.
All right.
I have, Mayor, can I just say one thing?
Councilwoman Diaz, I heard you did an amazing job. And as a former chair of the Scholarship Committee, I just want to say kudos to you. I've heard from several people how well-organized you were and what a good meeting it was. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, for the mayor's report. So on April 21st, I partnered with the Legal League Society of Palm Beach County to do a fair, a free fair housing workshop. It was well-attended. I believe over 100 people ended up showing up. And these are people that are going through either, like, you know, they're having violations through their tenant rights or to go into an eviction process. There's maybe fair housing or discrimination. And the reason I'm bringing this up, it's because it's becoming more prevalent. More people are going through the eviction process because the rising rental rates, it's easier to get rid of someone who can't afford rent to try to bring someone else in. There is not enough housing out there for everyone. You may have heard the data, 1,000 people move into the state of Florida every single day. What does that mean? It means it's driving our people out. And who are those people? It's our workforce. It's the people that provide the services, that local restaurants, that have local businesses here in the city. And I keep bringing this up because housing is becoming a hot topic. The county has been looking at options. And I'm going to bring it up from now on until we start working, the city starts working on a plan to start providing more housing. And we're only one small city in 39 municipalities, but we can do, we can do our part. So I don't know what that looks like. I'm not asking for anything specific today. I just want to bring up awareness. I want, I want the city, I want these council members, this council body to start looking at ideas, exploring, what do we do? We can't have our people move out and, you know, because otherwise, if you think inflation is high right now, wait until you can't hire somebody for more than 15 bucks an hour, because it's happening right now. And I hate to put my daughter on blast, but my daughter works at a, at a local restaurant. She's 18 years old. As a waiter, a waitress, she's getting more than $15 an hour plus, plus tips. I remember when I was growing up, it was like $2.50 an hour plus tips. So just imagine how much that plate at Olive Garden is going to cost in a year or two. The prices continue to skyrocket. And this is a national issue, but it's a local issue too. So I want this body to keep that top of mind. It's our people, can't afford to live here. People are getting displaced, people are getting evicted from their houses, their, their properties. And I would like us to work together. I think this is a nonpartisan issue that we can, we can truly help our community and the people that we represent. So with that being said, that concludes the mayor's.
Mayor, can we, I'm sorry.
I'll vote Councilmember Dugo and Deputy Mayor Tharman.
Can we propose or support, for one thing, a tenants' rights bill? I mean, so that people aren't tossed out, so that they can just bring in someone new?
Yeah, so unfortunately, there are preemptions that occur at the state level, so we can't. But I know that attorney is working on something, so I'm going to kick it over to Attorney Tercivia.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So what some cities are starting to do, and it started in Miami, Lake Worth is the first city in Palm Beach County to do this, is adopt an ordinance that requires 60 days' notice. So the state requires 15 days, but that section, there's a attorney general opinion that says that doesn't apply. So if you'd like, we can bring you back that same kind of ordinance for every fourth landlord can evict someone or raise their rent by more than, I think it was 5%. And they've got to give 60 days' notice. If you'd like that, we'll be working on bringing that back.
There is a cap on what they can raise the rent in that ordinance?
No, no, we can't cap what they can raise the rent. All we can do is provide notice so that instead of evicting somebody in 15 days, you get two months' notice and a chance to open up something else in this crazy environment. So, will we bring that back to you if you'd like?
Yes, I'd like it.
I think, I think we got consensus to bring that here. That was it, where, did you guys do that?
Miami was the first city to do it that we know of, and Lake Worth Beach is the first city in Palm Beach County. And obviously, we're spreading that word, both ladies are going to consider it next meeting. You're going to hopefully be considering it next meeting. So more and more cities are kind of jumping on board that.
Excellent.
And no disrespect to our legislature, but I wouldn't be surprised if next time they meet, they ban us from doing this. Right now, we have an opening.
Excellent. Deputy Mayor Tharman.
I forgot, I did actually have a comment. So I know a lot of us have worked with Sarah Agatsky from Feeding South Florida. She has taken a new position in Texas, so we're losing a wonderful, wonderful person in the community. So really, a huge thank you to Sarah and her team for helping keep our citizens fed, especially over the last few years with COVID. So a huge thank you to Sarah.
Could we ask our, the city to put something together for Sarah and send her a small token of appreciation from the city? Is that something we can do?
Yep.
Anybody have any issues with that? If you remember Sarah, she's the one that organized the Feeding South Florida.
No problem.
Excellent. All right, no other comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, please adjourn.